With something like this, right? Because not only was I successful, winning. Because when you file claims like that, you have to make sure you have, you allegation you make against somebody, make sure you can prove it. But I had been collecting my evidence for a while. Because I knew sooner or later I was like, I'm gonna get there. But I had to, I was collecting. And the school knew what they were doing was violating my son's rights. But because they thought, eh, you're a parent. What are you gonna do? I mean, there was a time where, you know, they've been telling me, they're like, eh, we can do whatever we want. And they said that, and I was like, you know what? Okay. But later on, I proved them that no, what you did was wrong. You know?
Well, like I said, I'm glad. And then, obviously, with the next month being autism, is it next month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's tomorrow actually starts.
Okay.
Tomorrow is April first.
Jesus. When is this time going? Like, yeah, so it's autism month. Are you doing any events? Is there something that you're planning to, like, do for the month or?
Yeah, so last year, we didn't do anything last year. So what with what my organization did and what I did as an advocate is I went in front of the city commission and I asked the city of Fargo to light the whole city hall. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, I remember that, yeah, I remember.
They light the whole building blue to honor autism awareness. You know, because this is one of the leading neurological disorder. Some people think it's mental health. It's neurological disorder. So it's totally different things. And so I'm not gonna go into that because you're in the medical profession. You're doing that, but I can tell you the difference is as a parent who have a child, I can, with, you know, that neurological disorder is that autism is neurological disorder. And so we are celebrating this year, we're doing an event. At the James Carlson Library, right off Thirty Second Avenue. So we have a panel of professionals. And so we're gonna have a panel discussion. And what we wanna do is we wanna raise awareness. Because this neurological disorder of autism is growing, right? It's growing. If you look at the CDC website, the numbers change, right? And so we wanna make sure that we're creating inclusive community and we wanna make sure that we're educating people so they are fully aware. Because people have different perspective when it comes to autism. People have so much perspective and so many different, what they think autism is and stuff like that. And if you see somebody with autism, sometimes you can prioritize them in a different way that, you know what I mean? That don't, it's kind of one of those say, not all shoes fit the same, right? Kind of like that comment somewhere there, but you know what I mean? So we wanna create this awareness and education and I hope people will come.
Is that, so it's, so it's open for everybody?
It is, it's open, it's open, it's public, it's open to everybody, anybody can come. We have a great, great, great panel. Uh, we were able to find really amazing people that can, uh, are going to be part of it and having their discussions. And we just need to be able to have those discussions and educate our community and be able to know that, hey, this is something, you know what I mean? You don't know, you might be working next to somebody who has it. Because there is different, because there is.
Oh, the stage to it?
There is a different stage to it. So there is that vocal and, you know, there's non vocal and vocal. So back in the day, they used to just call it autism Asperger, which are high function people, right? They're high functions and they're Asperger. The good movie I say you need to watch is called Good Doctor. It's on Hulu, it's amazing. If you don't know about autism, watch it, you will learn so much. And.
Is that a movie or a show?
It's a show.
Okay. Cause I was like, oh, I was like, I seen a show called Good Doctor.
Yeah, you should watch it, it's amazing. But you have the, and he was a brilliant doctor. You know, but he just, he did have some of those, he has some legging skill, like maybe the people's social skill, his legging.
Oh, yeah, I saw a lot of that.
Brilliant, you know what I mean? Like he's, I mean, everybody even come to him, like these doctors will ask him for his opinion. But, so there is different category. So that's, you know, so now they don't even call it Asperger and all this anymore, they just call it the spectrum. And so now they just call the autism spectrum. So it's just like they put it.
Under one umbrella?
Yeah, cause you can have different, you know, some people who have autism, they can have the vocal, non vocal and they can be like physically, you know what I mean? And some are not. So it's just, it's different. Affect everybody differently, I should say. But that's a topic that a doctor needs to give you in a detail, so I'm not gonna give you.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
I'm not gonna go into that with your audience, so then they're gonna think I'm like, you know.
Becoming a doctor?
I am not a doctor.
No, 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 I'm sure they will understand.
Yeah.
So speaking, going back to, uh, what's it called, the council, running for the council, are you thinking about doing that in the future or running for senate or governor or something?
Oh, I will not do senate because you, have you been watching what's going on right now with legislator?
A little bit.
No, yeah, I, yeah, I don't think I'm, you know, you know, it takes a lot from your family. Because when you run for state legislator, you have to, you have to live in Bismarck pretty much, right? You know that, right? And so I'm a parent that like to be involved in my kid's life. Like I wanna be there to eat with them, I wanna get up in the morning and give them breakfast and head, you know, drive them to school. I'm a very involved parent, so I don't think I will be able to do that. Like that, I don't think, I don't think, unless I move them with me to Bismarck, that's a different.
That's, that's. What, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm saying, that's doable.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
If the door, if the door knocking on, you open, you take it out.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know when it comes to that state, you know, legislator stuff, I don't know, you know? I like being an advocate, I like what I do as an advocate right now, you know what I mean? Because I can look at the bills that are coming and I can choose what I wanna testify on. And that's one thing I'm so glad I'm not on the school board because you have so much restriction. And so, and so I'm glad that I never won in twenty twenty when I ran for, I was so excited. My friends are like, people usually be upset, I was like, you, are you kidding me? I'm relieved, because there were some things I would have not done. You know, so when I, I didn't went for school board, I end up getting invited to do congressional briefing at Washington, right? I couldn't have done some of those things if I was on the school board.
That's true.
So my advocacy would have been limited.
Yeah, so your door, open other doors.
Yeah, so to me, it's kind of open some of those doors and I can speak up some of those things, I can advocate on some of the things I can testify. Because I have, uh, actually, there's couple bills right now that's in Washington DC that I was, I'm still heavily involved in. And one of them is counseling and not criminalization of kids. Instead of criminalizing the kids, we wanna make sure that they're getting the services, right? So there is a lot of bills, I'm not gonna give you all of it, because it goes into detail. You have to, I mean, you have to be so involved to understand, because then I'm gonna end up going into terminology, like using.
I'll be lost.
Cause I wouldn't be able to use the full word and just using like short words and then you'd be like, what is that?
I know, cause it's like when you're like, tiff this, I was like, hold up, you gotta have a plan. I'm not, I'm not in that level to understand what is that.
I know, I always, and I have to always realize where I'm at sometimes when I'm talking, you know? Cause I was having conversation with somebody and I was like, yeah, you know, the FBI was wrong and you know, they should have did the bib and they looked at me, they're like, what are you talking? I was like, oh, I am sorry, you know what I mean? Like I had to pause where I'm at and like, be like, oh, I'm so sorry. You know, cause you're so used to those short words and you just kind of, and you know, if you've been in that area of advocacy, you understand what that person is saying. But otherwise, it's kind of like, so I'm trying to learn to like, Victoria, kind of calm down with what words you're using. And so, yeah.
So not senate, not government for the moment?
No, I, I will vote for you though.
Uh, in four years, we'll see.
Right, what district are you in? Do you even know what district you're in?
Oh, Cas, what do you mean? Oh, oh, no, no, I don't know that.
So there is a district, you know what I mean? Like it can be, you can be District Nine, District Ten, Forty One, Forty, you know what I mean?
You're asking the wrong person at the moment. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, want some, so, okay, so my thing is like, uh, I think was it last year? No, no, not last year, the last election. Cause would you say, would it be, if I'm thinking like, say, one day I wanted to think about running for the office, would you say it would be good for me to be as a volunteer in a sense of like, whoever say I believe in a candidate, right? And then volunteer to just like, see how they, like to help or whatever it is, until then maybe you'll give me an aspect of, okay, well, this is what the day to day kind of thing is happening? Or what would you say like, the route to, obviously, there's more to it, but.
I will say, first of all, if that's the area you wanna go into, finding somebody that you trust that's already been in the area or is retired and get them to mentor you. And that's one of the things that even though now I'm an advocate, I do my advocacy work, I have mentors. I have attorneys that, you know, specifically work in specific areas. I have them as mentors, I have people who actually mentors me. So there's things where sometimes when I'm looking at, again, I'm not gonna use terminology, but when I was looking at kids, you know, education plans, you know, there's times where I was like, okay, let me get a clarification on this. I have mentors, right? I can call, because they've been doing this for thirty, forty, fifty years and some of them are retired in this area. I called them and be like, okay, this is what I'm looking at, what is, you know what I mean? And so always having that mentor, I have mentors, I have local mentors, I have a state mentors, I have a mentor in Washington DC.
True.
You know?
That's one, that's one thing I know I like, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I have mentors, because I don't know everything and I am learning every day and there's always something new to learn. And so I will encourage that if that's where you wanna go, yes, get involved and volunteer. Look at campaign, you know, look at candidate you wanna volunteer and volunteer in that area and start doing some of those work. And then if that's person that end up winning and you want them as your mentor and then, you know, say, hey, I wanna you to mentor me because this is something I wanna do later on, can you help me? I didn't have mentors when it comes to running for office, honestly, I just like, I'm gonna run. I just like, you know what, I'm gonna put my name in the bucket, I'm gonna run, right? And, you know, my friends like, I used to, yep, what is the issue? Why I have problem with the this and this and this and that? You know, and so, yeah, having that mentor. And then later on, when I did put my name in the bucket and I, you know, I was like fully in it and my first debate, actually, I was surprised, I had some people calling me that wanna mentor me. Which is kind of like, it was interesting, because when I first put my name, I'm running, kind of, everybody kind of like, you know what I mean? But then when they saw my first debate, they kind of said, okay.
So you know something.
You, you have something, you know what you're talking about, you know? And so then people wanted to have a conversation, wanna sit down with me and have a coffee and kind of, you know, pick on my brain. But you also have to be careful, you know what I mean?
What you say, you don't wanna say anything at one day.
Yeah, but no, you, I'll say that's how you all need to start.
Yeah, but no, I'm not ready for that, I know I'm not.
I didn't think I was gonna be ready though.
No, it's, my, right now, my cup is not full, I gotta fill it up until it's poured over, then I'll start.
I always say, you can always say you're not ready, you're not ready and you'll never be ready.
That's true.
That's the thing about life, the life, you don't know. I did not expect that I was gonna be an advocate, I did not expect that I was going to be in front of legislator and speaking. I never expect that I was going to be, you know, getting invited to do this and do this. I never expected that, that was not the path. It was never, I never thought I wanna be an advocate, I honestly never. Cause what I did was I go to work, I had the same job, I had my job for what, fifteen years or ten? That was it, I go to work, I come home, you know what I mean, deal with my life. But just like that, it got changed. It changed and I find myself, you know, in like, I'm not afraid to speak up. It, it just did something in me that it's just kind of like, you know, I, I have to speak on behalf of some of those kids, on behalf of the families.
That's true. And no, the thing is like, I feel like when you know your truth, it's easy to speak about it. Cause like sometimes I feel like the, your agenda of why people do things, it's like the, they're going the wrong way about it, so that's the reason why it's like, it's easy to.
That's a very true.
It's easy to be bad, it's easy to be controlled, it's easy to be that, you know? Cause you're going in like, in a sense, like you say, you know how there's people that wanted you to be in that part? If you didn't have your agenda, you didn't have your goal, like you didn't have like your morals, the things that you needed to be set, it would have been easy to, for you to be in that part, you know? Cause they would have easy got you and then you're like, oh, this is the, they'll go, oh, yeah, this is the plan you have, we agree. And then as soon as you got it, they're like, all right, so this, this, this gotta pass.
Yeah.
And you're like, what? But I said, no, this, this, this is the reason, you said it.
Yeah, because we supported you and now you do what we tell you, not as you think, you know? So they do it for you and, yeah. And that's one thing, integrity is a key. I always tell people, if you have that honesty and integrity, you're going to do the right thing with the presence of somebody or not. You know, you have to have that integrity and honesty within yourself. I was, like, again, I go back to that, I'm a strong believer. I don't wanna do anything just because nobody's seeing it, because you know who's seeing me? God, right? And so I always stay true to myself and I don't wanna change just because somebody don't like me or because I need to get a praise from somebody or I need to catch up because that person is doing, I need to look like that person, I wanna be like that. That's never been me, I mean, you know me since, since when I have never been the one that followed the crowd.
Yeah, you always been yourself, that's the thing.
Yeah, and, and so when I was entering to this, I was like, my character, my integrity and honesty, that's who I am. And I'm gonna get into this, I'm gonna run for this and I'm gonna stay true to who I am. And if people like me, fine, if people don't like me, at least I know at the end of it, I did not compromise my integrity. So that's, that was my goal.
Well, like I said, I appreciate you coming through. Um, I was planning to speak to you another time, but now I guess next time I'll bring you for a different topic and whatnot. So I know it might not be a hot topic or something, but, um, what do you think about like the situation that, things that happened in Tennessee? Like as a, as a, as a parent and with, you know, with the shooting that like, with the shooting that happened like a week ago, was that a week ago or beginning of the week? I can't even think of it now. You know how the three children got killed and also three, uh, what's it called, the three adults? Cause it seems like we only halfway through the, not even quarter into the year and there's like so many school shootings already happening.
You know, that's really, as a parent and as an advocate, it's really sad to see that, something like that is happening because we don't have a gun control. I mean, I, I respect and I understand people, First Amendment, I understand and I respect people's freedom of wanting to own a gun. But the question that we have to ask ourselves is that, are we, are we putting those guns in the wrong hands? Are we just having too many access? People having free access to this and it's taking away the life of children who are innocent? You know, they have so much they have not seen in this world and their life is getting taken because, you know, the wrong person end up having a gun. And so that's the part that's really heartbroken. And then how do we, how does our government look into this and will we be able to protect our children in a school? I know, and it is a fear, because you know, that can happen anywhere.
Correct.
You know, and that's the, the most scariest thing, because you know, I never let guns, I don't have a gun, I have a taser. So if you come to my house, I'm gonna taser you, you know? I just never.
By the time they get to, by the time they get to you, the taser is not gonna do anything.
Oh, trust me.
She said I gotta tell you, trust me. But, but no, because the thing is like, I look at it, it's simple, I was like, I mean, as far as like the, uh, what's it called? I don't have anything against anybody, the rights to own and all that. I feel like it's more of like the way, how you get it.
Yeah.
That is the way or like, I think there's gotta be some kind of way, because there's no right way, to be honest with you. You could fix, you could try this, it might, something else will happen. You try this, something else, but you just gotta try something different, because whatever it is, it's not working.
Yeah, and then, you know, I don't know much about guns, I'm not gonna lie to you, because I never owned one, so I don't know if there's a way of tracking the serial number to, and then whoever has it, do we hold that person accountable too, right? So if it's your gun and, you know what I mean? I come in and I take it from you and I did something with it, can they go and hold you accountable, right? I mean, how do we figure that out? That's something that's very complex.
Situation, it's more of, yeah, if it's more of a stolen or bought or whatnot. But otherwise, I think in a sense, it's like, yeah, you be responsible for the crime. So, yeah, unless you reported, A, it was stolen. You, it's like basically you take my card.
Yeah.
And then something happened, yes, it's my card. But if I say a reporter stolen, then it's your problem, not mine, you know? So I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
But, yeah, like, uh, like I said, um, it was a great topic, definitely, having you here and, um.
Yeah, we changed the whole topic, we're supposed to focus on one topic and you just swing me around and just.
I, you're trying, I told you that this is.
You focus in politics more than you focus on my advocacy stuff, I'm just kidding.
See, this is the thing, you know, I told, I asked her, I said, what do you wanna talk about? She said, the floor is yours, you know me.
Well, well, now I know, I will not give you the floor next time.
So that's the reason I was like, hey, you could, you, we could go, um, uh, what's it called? Whichever way you wanna go. But, yeah, if you wanna, if you, if you have anything that you wanna leave to the audience, to the youth, cause I feel like there's so many things that you could be able to, uh, from experience as far as like, um, cause I feel like right now with our youth, our community, there's, there's so much divide.
There's so much mental health, so much divide, there's just so much in our community. I never understand, you know, I'm a new, I'm a new American, right? But I never understand how complex tribes are until I become an advocate.
Oh, yeah.
And I tell you, there is one time I had a dad who come to my office, I kicked him out. I honestly kicked him out, cause he walked in and he stood up, he's like, what tribe are you from? I was like, I'm from no tribe. And so I was like, you guys sit down and we need to do the paperwork, right? And he's just like, well, I wanna know what tribe are you from? I was like, I'm not from any tribe, do you need us support services? Cause that's, this is what I do and this is how I can help your kid and this is what we can do. And he stick to that tribe, I give him, I told him, you have two choices, you can either sit and we can talk about what you're here for, or you can leave. And, you know?
He left.
I think he, no, he didn't wanna leave.
Oh, okay.
He's kind of tried to act like he's a little tough, you know? With me, it's kind of like, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be professional and say to you in a nice, get, get out of my office, right?
Without saying the things.
Without saying what I really wanna say, right? So I had to tell him, I was like, you know what, sir, I'm, I'm just gonna have to ask you to leave. When you're ready to come, I'll be happy to help you and your family. But at this time, I need you to leave.
Yeah, no, I think I had a.
You know? I didn't have a choice.
Yeah, no, I had an incident with one guy, it was like, I was running to him in a store and first time I ran into him, I was like, okay, you look familiar like me, whatever, I say hi, how you doing, you know? And he was like, what's your name, I say this. And I was away from him, I said, bro, why we gotta go there? Like, like we, like we, we established, we, we like literally from the same country.
Yeah.
That's, that should be good enough.
It does, yeah.
Like the other part, you know? So I was like, I ignored it, you know? Then next, cause the first time I ignored what he said and then the second time, like I said, it's the same store, so I guess we never, we probably live in the same place, uh, area. Next time I ran to him, I was like, oh, what's your name, I said it again. I remember him, but obviously doesn't remember me, I was like, oh, wait, I was like, mom, man. So the third time I saw the guy, I went the other way, I said, no way, I'm not doing it.
Cause they're so focused in this, you know, tribe thing and I think, you know, if they can unite and work with each other and forget about this tribe thing, I think they can do some great thing. Because, you know, we have a, we live in a community where, you know, I'm gonna tell you that we have such a great, we have white people in our community that's willing to help us. They are willing to help us, because I have, you know, I, I know that, but it's just sometimes it's so hard trying to help when.
We're not helping, you're jumping.
Yeah, when we think about just tribe. And then another thing is that I'm learning, you know, working as an advocate and learning not only tribe, it's just, we don't like people to know that I need help.
Nobody does.
You know, and, and a lot of times when I come and work with family, you know, I work with all family. I have white families, I have Native American, I have, you know, New American community, you know, I have them, Sudanese, Liberian, you name it. I have a lot of, you know what I mean, different families that would provide support services to. But a lot of times, especially in my new American community, a lot of my clients come from people telling them, somebody I help within the community or tribe. When I help them, they will tell somebody else and say, that woman helped me. And then they'll come to me and then they'll tell somebody, they'll tell somebody, they'll tell somebody. And I know that they, I have to go through that way for them to build that trust. Because their privacy is my priority, right? I wanna make sure that they know that their privacy is very important to the organization. And, and there's times where I'll have family member will call and be like, I know you're helping my niece, can you tell me what's going on? And I would just be like, I don't know what you're talking about, you know what I mean? Because I have to protect their privacy.
And I think, would you say that is more of like, I think, I mean, it goes to every culture, I mean, culture. But I feel like it's like more of the gossiping thing, is that the reason why they don't? Cause they feel like when I tell you something or if I tell somebody something and then it just gets out to, it gets spread to the community?
Yes, it, I think it's more of that, you know, it's the gossiping. And then another thing is that because they have already been in situation where their trust has been broken. You know, and so because that trust has been broken, they have a hard time trusting. And so because of it, it's sometimes it's difficult for you to, unless they have that, like I said, again, it's from that referral. So when I get that person telling them that this person helped me, I have a larger member coming to me, because then they know that the trust is there. That they know that I'm not the one that, cause I don't hang out, you don't see me go out and hang out and, like, that's not me. Because I know where I stand and where, which, which events are appropriate for me to be part of. I, I will be sitting in a room full of people and you can have five women can be my clients and nobody will know and I will not say anything. And I will not walk in the room and say, hey, so and so, hands up, no. I walk in, you know, I went to a birthday party that I was invited to and there was, most of, there was like a lot of my clients in there. And they thought I was gonna walk up to them and say, hi, so and so and so. I didn't, I walked in, I sat in the corner by myself and, you know, the girls came in and they were talking and we just talked and I got up and I left. The next day, the mom come and say, hey, I saw you in there, you didn't come and say hi? And I was like, I just don't wanna do that, because I don't want, you know, cause people know I'm an advocate.
Correct.
And if I go in there and start socializing with you.
People start either assume or.
Assume or whatever, and I just don't want you to feel uncomfortable.
That's just right.
And so they were like, oh, I didn't know that. I was like, it's not that I was ignoring you, it's just that I know we're sitting in a, you know, a new American event and there's a big group of people, so I had to, you know, remain respectful you and your family as you guys are sitting there. And I had to sit where I am, because I have to respect you.
That makes sense.
You know?
Okay.
Well, but, yeah, that's one of the things. But I hope that our more and more people can really get involved and supporting their kids, because mental health. And, um, again, autism is one of those neurological disorder that's, you know, increasing and more and more uh, based on the studies and, you know, if you look at the study by CDC and, um, other research, we need more and more, uh, Black, Hispanic and Asian are getting diagnosed with this autism neurological disorder. And so I think our community have so much to learn, because there's so many different understanding.
New answers, is new answers and it's not, we're not familiar, educated, uh, by it, is that what it is or?
Um, it's, autism, it's nothing new, you know, it's not new. But more from the studies I have doing research, more and more white kids were getting diagnosed with autism more than Black, Asian and Hispanic, right? So that number was more, a lot more white were getting diagnosed. But now more and more you're seeing those other diverse group are getting diagnosed, you know what I mean? And so those groups are getting diagnosed. And so I think we need to start creating that, um, educational awareness and understanding and within our new American community, so they can understand, there's nothing to be ashamed about it. This is neurological disorder and there is ways of, there's services. Our community have a lot of services and there's so many support services. So let's work and help that child be able to reach their potential, right? And so how do we do that? But in order for us to do that, they have to be okay and be able to say, you know what? I'm not ashamed to say that I have a child with autism, I'm not. You know? And so how do we educate the other families? Cause I have families that will tell me, I had a family that told me, my child has a demon wrapped up on them. That's what literally this family told me, this family did not wanna believe the word autism, their kid has it. And this is a new American community. And the response is like, we just need to go beat this demon out of this kid. I'm telling you, this is the truth. You know, and when you have a family tell you that as an advocate and you're working with them in front of this Kawaja, a room full of Kawaja.
It's like, yo, child of.
Do you know what these Kawajas are thinking?
Tell them this.
They look at I be like, oh, these people, you know what I mean? And, but, but that's their call, that's their beliefs, right?
But also, when you say with that, cause it's like, um, when they're doing, like, they're saying like, you know, the demon need to be beat out of them, because, um, they're coming to a new world and they used to what they're, uh, back home. And then, so now they're like, back home is treated. It's like maybe like a taboo thing, you know? And then now that you're here, you're being told something different and you're like, no, 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 no. But obviously, it was something different.
Exactly.
And then you're trying to tell me, I should look at this way? No, no, I'm going with that, what I know.
Exactly, and that's why I don't judge them. And I try to, as an advocate, my job is to help them, educate. And there's times where I have to tell them that I have a, I, I don't disclose to families I work with that I have a child with autism. Unless I run into that situation where they will tell me, oh, my child has a demon in them, we gotta beat them. I had one last week even, I'm driving with this mom, right? Pick them up and we're driving to appointment and they start talking, it's like, I tell you, this kid have a demon in them and this, 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 and, you know, you know autism is not real. Something as an advocate, sometimes you have to do less of talking and more of listening.
Actually, to catch you off before you continue, I don't think that is just as an advocate. Actually, to cut you off before you continue, I don't think that it's just as an advocate. Thank God some black people meet. No, because the reason why I did that is, cause I know, that's our, like, most of our problem, it starts with that.
Yeah.
We're so quick to like answering.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of like, let the person process the whole, say the whole thing they gotta say.
Yeah.
And we're like looking for that fifteen second of, you know, you say something I don't like and I'm focused and sold out much on it. Instead of letting you like complete the whole thing, but yeah, now you go, sorry.
No, you're like, no, 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 so I do that, and I do that with, I guess it's just my personality, I do more of listen, I like to digest that.
Okay.
When you tell me something, I'm not the type of person that's gonna take your word and just run.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sit and kinda try to process, and then I'll come back to you and kinda ask you that really questions to kind of get a clarification, cause sometimes you just don't know. And so, this is, you know, this parent just sit there and tell me all this, after I say, you know, I have a child with, I know, autism. And it changed, I think at that moment, they passed.
Yeah.
And so, then I start telling them, some of the challenges that they're going through, that I went through, so I understand.
Yeah.
But here's where I'm at, because I was able to, I was able to accept the help.
Yeah.
But first we have, I had to acknowledge and I had to say, yes, my kid needed the help, right? That was the first thing, and when I was able to do that. I was able to go and get those services, so my job is to teach you some of those services I know and I had access, I wanna be able to help you.
Yeah.
And be able to understand that this kid can, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Do as much as some people, they might not have the full function like, you know what I mean, you and I is.
Yeah.
But they can still be able to do things, but you have to be able to say, I'm willing to get them the help, and that's something in our New American community. We do not wanna talk about this, I had a parent that was very upset because the school placed, um, again. IEP, Individual Education Plan, right? And so, it was placed what's called educational autism on their child's, you know, paper.
Yeah.
And they became so upset, it was, they were so upset, and they were going back and forth with the education, they were, like, there was issues going in there.
Right.
And again, somebody that I had worked with told them like, hey, you know what? This organization helped me, you should reach out to this lady, she helped me, cause I'm, they call me the lady.
Yeah.
And they're like, this lady helped me.
Yeah.
And so, by the time that family reached out to me and told me what was going on, I already know, because I've been doing this for a while, so I know. Where we're gonna head.
Yeah.
With this and how I need to prepare myself to explain to them and educate them.
Yep.
And so, by the time I, you know, we went and met with the school administration, we talked and I educated them and I told them what's going on, and they were completely fine. And I think that's the mistake, I think is that communication barrier, right?
Oh, yeah.
The school did not explain to them and educate them.
Yep.
They took it in a way that the school probably didn't intend.
Yep.
Because of that language barrier, and so, how do we provide that education? And where we can both know how to communicate and understand each other when we're working with those families, in our culture, within our New American.
Yeah.
And also with the education, so they understand, how can they serve us? What can we do is to educate them, right?
Correct.
And so, if we can do that, who's benefiting? That child.
Correct.
But we have to work together collaboratively and put our differences apart.
That's true, well, I appreciate you now, like, educating us, I, I learn a lot, I'm not gonna lie, I. I was blank at the beginning, I thought I knew, I knew a lot about it, but no, I definitely learned a lot today.
Well, I hope you guys will come, I hope all of you in this room will show up that day and, you know, and actually learn a lot from the panel.
Well, I'll definitely come to the panel, so.
Yeah.
Educate myself more, cause it's, uh.
Cause any of you guys in this room can be an advocate, you know what I mean, cause you might run into family that have, you know, going through a situation, it doesn't only. I don't only work with family with children with autism, right? I work with families, it doesn't matter, in general.
Yeah.
I have been in juvenile court with families, I have been inside doctor's office in advocate for families, I have been inside the school in advocate for families. My job is, as an advocate, is to be there and help that family, be able to access the services they need.
Yeah, and what, basically what you're doing is you're bridging the, abridging the gap where, like, there aren't, there's no understanding and then bringing them together and making things.
And helping it for both, so then when you build that bridge, you know, I like how you put it, cause once you build that bridge, cause then, guess what happened? Trust.
Yep.
Cause now I trust you and you trust me.
Yep.
You, you're not gonna need me, right? Cause now you guys can work together, cause you understand each other, and now you can, can work together, and sometimes it's a culture difference in culture. And I run into this a lot as an advocate with the New American community, when they call me about this.
Yep.
They go off.
Yeah.
And to this, and then I come in, as, but I know, because I come from that culture and I understand.
Yep.
So because of it, sometimes I just, I will listen to their, let them vent, and when they're done out of their system. And then I can explain to them why this happened and why they're coming from, and I, how important they are. And why I think they need to be involved, and then it changes their perspective, and they can go from a ton of voice really angry.
Yep.
To sitting down and be like, oh, thank you so much, and, you know, with shaking their hand of this person they were so angry at. And say, thank you for really wanna help me and all this, but that's what I wanna do as an advocate, build that trust and build that relationship, so we can help. The student or the entire family.
Yep, no, definitely, like I said, definitely, I know from now I'll be there, um.
Yeah.
Do whatever I can do.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Maybe get some videos, the one we spoke, I'll, I'll carry.
Yep, we'll talk about that one, Jackson, you were, you was my witness.
Uh, no, no, I don't, I don't think we are, nobody agree, but, um.
Now he's just cheating the whole thing.
So, guys.
This is, you know, you get what you, you know, when you invite me here and all this, and now you're like, oh, well, I didn't agree to that, I didn't agree to being here, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming through. So, um, I would like to say again, uh, uh, like I said, thank you for coming to and, uh, for educating us. And definitely I'm gonna bring it back, but this, next time might be a lot tougher, just giving a heads up, I was, I was.
I've been on a campaign road and I've been in front of debates, so I can handle myself.
I know you can, so.
If, if I don't wanna answer, I just changed the whole topic.
I, I know how to commit the, I mean, plead the fifth thing where.
I'll just plead the fifth and be like, you know what, that's not where I can speak, but we can talk about this.